Chapter four, Title 30, Go to Laws of South Carolina in 1976. An agenda's been posted on the front door of City Hall and notification of this meeting's been given to the news media. We're going to start with our invocation. Is there anybody that wishes to give our invocation today? I know Bishop McCray usually gives it. He's unable to join us today. We'll take a volunteer if they... Ronnie, you want to give it?
I'd be glad to.
All right, thank you. We're going to follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all many blessings. We ask that you be with us tonight as we come to this meeting to represent the city of Greenwood. We ask that everything be done in your name and in the glory for you. We ask you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the law of the Constitution. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I understand we have a... we do have a quorum?
Yes, sir. We have a quorum.
All right. First thing up is Consent Agenda. Is that correct? First up is the Consent Agenda. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right.
Make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Second.
All right. Any further discussion regarding the Consent Agenda? All in favor of approval of the Consent Agenda?
Aye.
Thank you. All opposed? That motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. What do we have next?
Under Public Hearing, item number one is to consider ordinance number 21-020, authorizing the city manager to negotiate a purchase contract conveying approximately 6.76 acres of city-owned property located at 700 Kitson Street against second reading and public hearing.
All right. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of proposed ordinance number 21-020? Let the record reflect, there are none. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to proposed ordinance number 21-020? Let the record reflect, there are none. Do I hear a motion with regard to this proposed ordinance?
Motion to approve ordinance number 21-020, authorizing the city manager to negotiate a purchase contract conveying approximately 6.76 acres of city-owned property located at 700 Kitson Street.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Bass, second by Ms. Hutto. Any further discussion regarding proposed ordinance number 21-020? I know we've had extensive discussion on this. Take a vote. All in favor of ordinance number 21-020?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries by a vote of six to one. What do we have? All right.
We had three public appearances this evening. The first is to recognize Mr. William Kelly with the South Carolina Law Enforcement Network for the presentation of a series of awards to the Greenwood Police Department and staff. We have a lot of police officers in the hallway, and if they just kind of want to come here, Chief, that would be fine.
Mr. Kelly?
Mr. Kelly, you can come on up.
All right. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, and council. I think I can speak loud enough. Okay. All right, again, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, and council, and everybody present. First and foremost, we want to thank y'all for giving us this opportunity to come and make these presentations. We have a couple of awards that we like to present. But first, before I make my statements or make my presentation, I would like to give the opportunity to my director, Director Phil Riley, with the South Carolina Department of Public Safety, Office of Highway Safety and Justice Programs, to give him the opportunity to make a few remarks if he chooses to do so, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely. Sure.
I know y'all are busy, so I'll be brief, real brief. But I appreciate the time to come up here and present this to the Greenwood City Police Department and Officer White. I know it's a very thankless job sometimes, law enforcement is, especially these days. I know the Greenwood City government and the citizens of Greenwood expect the officers to do their job, expect them to make a difference. And receiving this award tonight, I can assure you, they are making a difference. They are doing their job. I think the numbers are over 100 DUI arrests in 2020 in Greenwood City. I believe Officer White had 44 DUI arrests. So you can rest assured that lives were saved because of the efforts of the Greenwood City Police Department and Officer White. So y'all can be proud of them tonight. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kelly to do the first presentation.
Thank you, Director. Again, my name is Brent Kelly. I'm the Special Programs Manager for the Office of Highway Safety and Justice Programs at South Carolina Department of Public Safety. And we do a DUI enforcement recognition ceremony every year, which is normally held down at Seawells in Columbia. But for the last two years, because of COVID, we had to unfortunately cancel that ceremony. And that's normally where we do these presentations at. But again, we want to thank y'all for allowing us to come in tonight to take a few minutes to make these presentations in front of the city council, in front of all of their peers. First one I want to do is I'm going to present the Agency of the Year Award. But basically, the way these awards are chosen and the way we do these is these are nominated by the agency. So the agencies fill out nominations and they mail them into us. So we take all the nominations, and we break these categories down into five different categories based on the size of the agencies in the state. So Category 1 is for our smaller departments, that's for officers. Agencies for the size of one to 10 officers. Category 2 is for agencies with the size of officers 11 to 25. Category 3 is 26 to 49, which is what Greenwood Police Department falls in. They fall in that category. Category 4 is for the size of 50 to 100 officers. And then Category 5 is 101-plus. So the first one, like I said, is going to be Agency of the Year. And I'm just going to read you the nomination letter that was sent to us. And the way it works, we have no say-so in these nominations. Our office stays neutral in these. We have a panel that comes in of three different people from outside agencies, and they read each one of these nominations, and they are the ones who decide who the winners are. That way, we're neutral, and nobody can say that we had any influence on anybody. So the letter that was sent to us for Agency of the Year says, "The Greenwood City Police Department would like to be considered for the Agency of the Year Award for DUI Enforcement due to its significant increase in DUI-related arrests and focus on DUI enforcement. In 2019, Greenwood Police Department officers only made 60 DUI arrests. However, in 2020, the officers made 101 DUI arrests. This is a 68% increase in total arrests. Greenwood Police Department has strongly encouraged its officers to step up DUI enforcement efforts to make the highway safer. The department has committed to strenuous DUI enforcement and has shown this by fully supporting the Drug Recognition Expert Program. In fact, in 2019, only four of the 60 DUI arrests were thought to have involved drugs rather than alcohol. In 2020, the first full year of Greenwood Police Department's in-house DRE programs, 25 of the DUI arrests were thought to have involved drugs rather than alcohol. That is a 525% increase." And that is one thing that we're seeing a major or a huge increase in, not only in our state but across the country, is we're seeing more drug-related impaired driving than we are alcohol right now. It's on the rise across the country. The Greenwood Police Department has used its Facebook page to educate the public on the dangers of impaired driving and will continue these efforts. Greenwood Police Department officers use traffic safety checkpoints and patrol techniques in order to achieve the above results, and Greenwood Police Department officers actively searched out impaired drivers rather than simply responding to collisions or bad driving complaints. Greenwood City Police Department would like to be considered for this award. And with that being said, I would like to present the Agency of the Year Award from the South Carolina Department of Public Safety to Greenwood Police Department and Chief Shadowen for excelling in the area of DUI arrests, DUI victim services, and anti-underage drinking programs in South Carolina during 2020. Thank y'all for allowing us to come in.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Even got Chief to dress up in this suit, but they look sharp. So appreciate y'all coming to Greenwood to give this, and maybe sometime in the soon, in the near future, we'll be in Tier Four with a number of police officers.
All right. We got one more.
That's right.
Yeah, Mr. Green.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, distinguished guests, thank you very much for having us. And again, I work with Mr. Kelly and Director Riley at Office of Highway Safety and Justice Programs. I'm over at the Law Enforcement Network for the state of South Carolina, and I get to deal with most of the agencies across our state. And before I read the nomination for Sergeant White and his award, I just want to remind you that in 2020, when there were a lot of agencies that weren't doing traffic because of that limited contact with COVID, these guys here at the police department, especially Sergeant White, really set the bar high to make sure that our roadways in the state and in Greenwood was safe. And I've got family members that live here in Greenwood, so that definitely hits very close to home for me. But I want them to read the nomination for Sergeant White and then do the presentation. The Greenwood Police, City Police Department hereby nominates Sergeant Brandon White for the DUI Officer of the Year Award, and that is in Category 3, as Mr. Kelly outlined. Sergeant White has shown excellence in the area of DUI enforcement, not only by the number of the DUI arrests he made in 2020, but also because of his advocacy of aggressive DUI enforcement to other members of the department. Sergeant White regularly assists other officers with DUI-related matters and is in the process of updating the department's DUI policy. Sergeant White is the department's in-house DRE, Drug Recognition Expert, and has used the skills associated with the DRE program to greatly increase the number of drug-based DUI arrests. In 2020, Sergeant White made 44 DUI arrests, accounting for 44% of the 101 overall DUI arrests for the Agency for the Year. Sergeant White has met with the Eighth Circuit Solicitors Office to discuss overall DUI enforcement and has also attempted to meet with members of the South Carolina Senate to discuss possible changes to strengthen the DUI laws in our state. It should not, it should be noted that Sergeant White regularly seeks out educational opportunities with regards to DUI enforcement and prosecution. All of the above is even more impressive considering that Sergeant White was assigned to the Uniform Patrol Division for all of 2020, with the exception of the last three weeks of the year, and had to perform regular patrol duties in addition to the above DUI enforcement efforts. It is in the opinion of the chief that Sergeant White went above and beyond the call of duty in order to make the city of Greenwood a safer place to work and live and travel through, and we as the state would also agree with that assessment. I'd like to read the award if I can. It says, "Presented to Officer of the Year, Sergeant Brandon White, Greenwood Police Department for excelling in the area of DUI arrests, DUI victim services, and anti-DUI underage drinking programs in the state of South Carolina during 2020." And is with that Sergeant Brandon White.
Again, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, and council. Thank you. Thank y'all. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all. We're very proud of our folks, our public safety officers. Thank y'all. Hopefully next year, we don't have as many people drinking, so you don't have to drink and drive, and so you don't have to arrest that many people. But that's the main goal. But thank y'all for all you do, and thank you for the recognition. We're proud.
Thank y'all for the time. We appreciate it. Here those that were caged, they were wearing a uniform.
That's right. Amen.
Thank y'all again.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
Before all the police officers head on out of here, we also have a presentation by Chief Shadowen for the JP Strong Award to Officer Andrew Ramos.
Real quick, just before we get started, I'd just like to thank all the men and women here. It, you know, my job is what I consider small compared to what these guys and girls do. It just amazes me every day when I pick up the phone and I get so many compliments from our citizens and city of Greenwood for everything they do. But the first person I want to recognize, we'll get into that, is just Officer Ortega. Under the DUI enforcement, Officer Ortega was also recognized. He had 16 DUIs, which was second in our agency. So I just want to recognize him and just tell him thank you for everything you do.
So the next award I would like to present is the JP Strong Award. The JP Strong Award is awarded to the student in each class at the current South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy who attains the highest cumulative academic score total points for all unit tests. A minimum of 96 average must be achieved in order to qualify for the award. No student who has been recycled for academics, proficiencies, or has any disciplinary issues is eligible for this award. This award is the highest and most prestigious award given by the South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy. In our job, especially in my job, when we go to hire people and recruit people, we're looking for the best that we can, we can bring in. That's what's going to determine how we succeed as a police department. And that's what we want to give our citizens and our council members and our mayor and our city manager, is the best possible officers. I go to meetings with chiefs all over South Carolina, and I hear them say how great they are and how grateful they are to have one person who's won the JP Strong Award. Well, Mr. Ramos is going to be our third person that we currently have on staff right now that has received this honor. So I'm just extremely proud, and I'd like to present this to Mr. Ramos. Come on up, Mr. Ramos. Thank y'all so much for allowing us to come up here and recognize that. It's very important. Like I said, it's one of the most prestigious awards that they give out. So thank you very much.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Want to congratulate Officer Ramos? You mentioned we have two others. Who else do you?
Correct. We have Bailey Thompson, who is currently a lieutenant, and Lucas Spencer, who's Allen Petrosia.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
So he'll make our third one that we got currently on staff.
Well, I appreciate it. Proud of y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Well, our third public appearance, and Anne, I'm not sure how you're going to top that one, but I'm going to recognize Anne Barklow for a presentation on National Pollinator Week. Come on up, Anne.
All right, Anne. Changing topics a little bit.
Love the hat. Thank you. Well, as you know, this is National Pollinator Week, and Bee City, USA, we became a member of them in 2017. So as of today, we have eight pollinator gardens in Greenwood. And I think you can all agree, it looks really good out there.
It does.
And I don't know if we get more comments today on the topiaries or the pollinators that are out there. And I don't know too many people that can wait out in front of Uptown Family Practice and watch hummingbirds and butterflies come by. So I think we bring so much to the city with these, and I owe it, we owe it all to you. You're the ones that approved Bee City, USA, and I'm hoping that you will sign a proclamation recognizing that Greenwood would like to recognize National Pollinator Week, so.
Well, I've got a proclamation. I'm aware, wear this thing while I read it, I guess. I'll come, go down. I tried to put it in my hair, so it doesn't make sense.
Sorry I didn't bring you up.
I'll tell you what, if you want to come up here, I'll read it while we get it.
This is cute.
So I have a proclamation, City Greenwood proclamation. Whereas pollinator species, such thousands of species of bees, are essential partners in producing much of our food supply, and whereas pollinator species provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy, diverse urban and suburban ecosystems, and whereas pollination plays a vital role for the trees and plants of our community, enhancing our quality of life and creating recreational and economic development opportunities, and whereas for decades, the city of Greenwood has managed urban landscapes and public lands that include many municipal parks and greenways, as well as wildlife habitats, and whereas the city of Greenwood provides recommendations to developers and residents regarding landscaping to promote wise conservation stewardship, including the protection of pollinators and maintenance of their habitats in urban and suburban environments. And now therefore, I, Brandon Smith, Mayor of the city of Greenwood, do hereby proclaim the week of June 21st through 27th, 2021, as our municipality's observance of National Pollinator Week, and the city of Greenwood as an affiliate of Bee City, USA, and urge all citizens to recognize this observance. Thank you. Appreciate what you did. Thank you.
I believe you all received a pollinator guide, challenge. You can see where all the pollinator gardens are located, and I think it's worthy to note that Anne is only a part-time employee, but when she puts herself into something, she does it wholeheartedly, and we appreciate her being a part of our, of our, of our team here at the city.
Absolutely.
Oh, that's a wrong slide. No, I just forgot to do it again.
All right. Under Unfinished Business, item number one is to consider ordinance number 21-016 annexing one parcel of land, approximately .12 acres located at 1511 Montague Avenue Extension, which is owned by Carolina Sales Storage of Greenwood. This is second reading.
Do I hear a motion with regard to proposed ordinance number 21-016?
Motion to approve ordinance number 21-016.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bass, second by Ms. Hutto. Any further discussion regarding ordinance number 21-016? All in favor of ordinance number 21-016?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries by a vote of seven to zero.
Item number two, under Unfinished Businesses, to consider ordinance number 21-017 is annexing four parcels of land, approximately .35 acres located off Montague Avenue Extension owned by Greenwood CPW.
Similarly, do I hear a motion with regard to ordinance number 21-017?
Motion to approve ordinance number 21-017.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Bass, a second by Ms. Barklow. Any further discussion regarding ordinance number 21-017? All in favor of ordinance number 21-017?
Aye.
Motion carries by a vote of seven to zero.
Under Unfinished Business, item number three is to consider ordinance number 21-018 annexing four parcels of land totaling approximately 87.52 acres located at Clermont Drive, Cokesbury Road, and Northside Drive. This is second reading.
This is the same.
This is the Seven Oaks subdivision located across the street from Greenwood High. I can, if you want to do a motion now, or I can go ahead and cover a couple of things for you guys.
Is there anything we need to know about that other?
I'll click through some slides here, and Draper, Phil wants to come up and be prepared to answer some questions, but I think everyone, we've talked about this a lot, so I think everybody's relatively clear on, you know, what the intended use is. I read this is 180, propose 188 total units to be constructed in three phases. We did a site walk, I believe, on May the 24th with a few members of city council, in which the developers were present, and we walked really more so the areas that are going to buffer existing neighborhoods. So they did update the clearing plan that you'll see there. Draper, just chime in. They have basically intend to leave any natural buffer areas present as they are. If they, and that's 25 feet, I believe. If they have to go in to do any clearing, they will come back in with the buffer yard as indicated in our zoning ordinance, I believe it was Table 4.
Yeah, Table 4.
So they'll come in and supplement if they have to take it out. But their intent is to leave all the natural buffers in place for that 25 feet that those of you that walked are aware of what we're talking about.
There will also be the landscaping around the entrance off Cokesbury Road. That'll also be.
I'm going to click, I'm going to click forward just a little bit so that, so I just want to touch on a couple of things. The only things that have changed since we last met were they updated the landscape plan to reflect what council desired. And after the walkthrough on May 24th, they've addressed all the other items that you all asked them to address. They did make an adjustment to the phasing, which Phase 1 now includes 101 homes, and then Phase 2 and 3 is like 43, 44 homes. There is no entrance on Northside Drive. The emergency access, fire access road has been moved to Clermont, which is behind the amenity center. That was only used in case of an emergency, but it has been moved. So there will be no access at all off Northside Drive. I know the last time we spoke, there was discussion about, well, maybe we don't, we remove it as a permanent egress, but we have it there for emergencies. But then after some conversation, it was determined that perhaps a better location for that was behind the amenity center, since that area of the property was already going to be developed. Am I missing anything?
I think that pretty much covers it, except for the conditions.
Right. If you all are inclined to approve it, we do have a couple of conditions that we want to have you all include in your motion. Can we cover them now, or we'll take some questions?
And the emergency access, just to clarify, will be gated, right?
Right. So right now, it's intended to be, it'll need to be paved, needs to be 26 feet wide, and it'll have a gate. Our fire marshal has asked the developers to send them sort of a rendering or example of what the gate will look like.
Okay. Because I know there was some concern from Druid Hills about an entrance there, so I just want to make sure we clarify that. just want to make sure we clarify that. For, for whenever they.
For instance, the emergency fire access road in, say, Carley Hill.
Yeah.
Has, has it ever been used to y'all's knowledge?
You know, I don't know the answer to that, and I'm sorry, I could have had someone from the fire department here, but I'll, I'll give you an example, you know. If, if Station Two is responding to a fire in that neighborhood, they're coming straight up Cokesbury, and they're coming in the main entrance. But say there were some sort of vehicle collision, and they couldn't get in, they would have to go around down Claremont to come in that way to be able to access those houses. So the odds of them having to use the emergency access are relatively slim, but it has to be there. I believe the threshold is, if it's 34 houses, then it has, it's required.
Is that for new development? What about existing developments? I'm unaware of a second entrance to my neighborhood.
They're coming in through your backyard.
Right over there near your pond.
Yeah.
On the back side, there's a double gate there.
There is, but I don't know that they have the key.
There's nothing really in the zoning code that requires the second access at this point. It's really a fire code requirement that's been coming up in some of the latest developments that have been worked on, but as far as I understand it, going forward, through the fire code, new developments will need a second access if it's 30 units or more.
And so basically, the gate is locked there, but the fire department, in case of emergency, they have a key?
That's correct. It wouldn't be available for the public to come in and out, so it should still address the concerns of the Druid Hills residents. They won't have traffic, they won't have individuals living in Seven Oaks coming on to Claremont there. It would only be if there's an emergency and the main access, the main entrance off of Cokesbury is not available for some reason.
Gotcha. And maybe this, maybe this is something you wanted to address in the motion, but the vegetation, we, we talked about when it will be completed. Is that still planning to be vegetation, the vegetative buffer to be, to be completed by the end of Phase One?
That's correct. The narrative for the narrative proposal does talk about how the buffer area will be completed as part of Phase One. There's some language in there that also talks about bonding. If, if there's need for that, if they intend to bond the whole, the entire landscape bond will need to be included in that bond. The narrative currently is a little, a little interesting. It seems to suggest that only uncompleted portions will need to be included, but we'd like to include the entire buffer area, and then if necessary, we can release portions of the bond as, as phases are completed.
So for example, the zoning ordinance requires a landscape bond to be put up for 125%. If at the end of Phase One, they put in 90% of the landscaping, we were released, we could release 90% of the bond. I think their intent is to put in as much of the landscaping and buffering as they can in Phase One, but there may be parts of it that they just can't get in, and in that case, the bond would remain on those items until they were installed. So moving the meeting forward, you know, if, if council was inclined to give second reading approval to this ordinance tonight, we would ask that you include these four items as conditions of approval, which is including the, the bond for the landscaping. The emergency fire access would have to be paved in its entirety and be 25, 26 feet wide, and then we would request samples of the gate be provided to and approved by the City Fire Marshal, and a privacy fence installed along the southern portion of the property line of 107 Northside Drive West. That was the property line that we walked, Paul, in a lot, so I think you guys know what we're, what we're referencing. And then I believe the intent here is that the amenity area has to be completed in Phase One, and the narrative says that, but there was some numbering that made it look a little off, so we're all in agreement that the amenity area is completed in Phase One, right? Yep. So we just want to make sure those things are clear.
All right.
And then staff can manage those pieces as they move forward.
And I know developers are here. Developers, good with these conditions? I mean, it'd be silly if we approved it, but y'all weren't good with it, I guess. Yeah. Well, thank you, Draper. Appreciate it. Anything else you need to add? Do I hear a motion, before we begin the discussion, do I hear a motion with regard to ordinance number 21-018?
Right. Will you put those conditions back? Make a motion to approve ordinance number 21-018 with the following conditions. The entirety of the buffer landscape areas should be completed with Phase One and be included in the bond for City zoning ordinance. Second one is the emergency fire access must be paved in its entirety and be 26 feet wide. Samples of the proposed gate must be provided to and approved by the City Fire Marshal. Privacy fence, three, a privacy fence should be installed along the southern property line of 107 Northside Drive West. Four, amenity area must be completed in Phase One.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bass, second by Ms. Hutto. Is there any further discussion amongst council with regard to ordinance number 21-018? Anything that developers wanted to add that we hadn't covered? All in favor of ordinance number 21-019, along with the conditions that Mr. Bass stated?
Let have you restate that, but 21-01.
Excuse me. All in favor of ordinance number 21-018, along with the conditions stated by Mr. Bass and seconded by Ms. Hutto?
Nay.
All opposed?
Ms. Bolz.
Aye.
Okay. Did I see your vote?
I was sorry.
Yea.
Yea, okay. That motion carries by a vote of six to one.
All right. Under unfinished business, item number four is to consider ordinance number 21-019, amending the City of Greenwood's official zoning map by reselling one parcel of land, approximately 79.64 acres located at 1400 Florida Avenue, from general commercial to low-density residential R3 to master plan residential. This is second reading. Before we get too far along in the discussion here, we still have really clear resolution on the, you got me something?
No, I don't have clear resolution, but there's an opportunity to just say something real brief.
Shoot, yeah.
And I got some documents.
Okay. So the, so the challenge that has existed with this particular property is Phase Two access onto Elementary Avenue, and the developers did provide us with a letter today from their attorney with an interpretation that the, that the road was deeded to remain publicly accessible. So I'll, I'll let Paul speak on this piece.
Yeah. I know there was discussion at the last City Council meeting, and I'll, I'll be brief because I know this is probably out of order to speak at second hearing, but what I provided for you was the developer's attorney's opinion in reviewing all the title documents on the property and the original deed. I guess when the property was conveyed or the roadway was conveyed to the school district, and then the second part of that is the deed itself, and then the third part is basically an email that we received from Billy Libran, who works in the district office for, he basically is our liaison for granting encroachment permits, driveway accesses, and he kind of details out that. So really what I would like to say is, we don't have, I don't, I don't think we're have complete agreement with the city and with the school district at this point in time. What I would like to request, if this is even remotely possible, since this only deals with a small portion of the property, technically you have three kind of individual little pods. The other two access straight off of State Road. My client has already purchased the property and owns the property, so, and also, this is not the last chance for permitting. We still have to design the plans. We have to get all of our permits in place. So I was wondering if there was a mechanism to go ahead and approve the zoning contingent upon any kind of conditions that staff may recommend, and with the understanding that we cannot proceed forward with permitting on the section that ties directly to Elementary Ave until this issue is resolved. Our understanding is we have the right to tie to that road, and that road should have been converted over to a public road, but it wasn't, so we gotta, we gotta figure it out, and we understand that. But I would like to move forward at least on the other two remaining pods that direct, that, that have access directly off of Florida Ave. I don't know that that's possible.
I would like to clarify that what you're asking is for City Council to approve second reading with the condition that you cannot permit or develop Phase Two until the road issue has been resolved.
That's correct. And to be honest with you, I can't develop that section until I get a permit from the city for land disturbance. I can't do it until I get a, an encroachment permit, so I wouldn't be able to do it. This meeting tonight is basically just entitling the property that it's annexed in the city, and it has the zoning, but I still have to turn around and, and submit design plans to the city.
Phil, can you, do you mind stepping up here to the podium? Paul's bringing things on us. What's the planning, planning department's position on his request?
I, I believe City Council could approve the two phases with the condition that the last phase does not be approved until we receive some resolution on the issue. I would recommend that you bring that back before council, just for information purposes, and if there's any modifications that need to be made to the plan on that one phase, council could do that as an amendment to the actual ordinance that was approved.
And the phases you would be approving would be one and three.
When, when we say that the, the ingress egress issue is resolved, that sounds very general and vague. I mean, what are the, what are the potential solutions that we should be, that we are approving it for, you know, conditioned upon that? You know what the?
I mean, I don't want to speculate on what potential resolutions there could be. You know, I don't know how much conversation these guys have had with District 50. Right now, I feel like the city doesn't really take a position in that we're not really a player in this particular piece of the puzzle. It's really something that's between Blue Water and Mark III and District 50. It could come down to someone asking the city to take ownership of the road, at which point we would have a different set of things that we would have to evaluate and address. So there's, I think, multiple resolutions that could come about, but at this point, I would think that Blue Water or Mark III or whoever's driving this on y'all's end, I'm not sure, would be in communication with District 50. I've let District 50 know what that deed says. I, I don't know if they were aware that the deed had that language in, that it was, I don't know the exact language, because Paul didn't give me a copy of the letter, but I believe it said a publicly owned use or public access, or something like that. I don't know if Trip has a different opinion, but if council's amenable, you know, we can take the path that Mr. Limler suggested, and you all can give that sort of conditional approval to two of the phases, and have the third phase come back to you for approval once the resolution with the road has been reached.
Is, are we looking for a motion similar to the other one we made with those conditions? Do you have those conditions that can be?
I do not. You heard them in the same way that I did. I would just make the motion to approve. I don't want to tell you.
So all of the other, so all of the other conditions that staff had or council had have been resolved, and we're only.
This was the only condition thing.
The only condition is.
This.
The road.
Access to Elementary Ave. Perhaps you make the motion that no, no subdivisions, no lots can be subdivided or permitted that have access off of Elementary Avenue until the issue with the road is resolved, and that that should come back before council for approval, secondary approval. Does that help? That makes sense. Okay.
We, we good with that, Mr. Badgett?
I was starting to look something up.
We, we're good with the way. The way this motion is going to be.
Yeah, if Phil says it can be made in a contingent manner, if Phil says it can be made in a contingent manner, that's fine, but it's not a city road right now. I mean, it's in the city limits, but we don't own it. As far as the dedication of the public way, that's, you know, there are written instruments recorded that speak to that, but as far as ownership and maintenance of the road, that's, that's not for us right now.
All right, is anyone brave enough to read a motion?
I will make my most valid attempt possible. Somebody's going to owe me lunch after this.
I, I would, but I don't think I can make the motion.
Motion to approve 21, ordinance number 21-09, to conditionally approve Phases One and Three, ask the developer to come back for conditional approval, once the, once the issue of Elementary Avenue is resolved for us to be able to approve development of Phase Two lots. Is that fine? Phase Two.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bass.
Would you restate the motion, please?
Second by Ms. Hutto. Any further discussion regarding ordinance number 21-019? All right. All in favor of ordinance number 21-019, along with the conditions set out by Mr. Bass in his motion?
Aye, only because we don't own the road.
All right. That motion carries by a vote of seven to zero with an asterisk from Ms. Bolz. Thank you.
All right, under new business, item number one is to consider the appointment of Lisa Smith to the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. If you would like, I can read Ms. Smith's bio there. I think a lot of you probably know her. She's very active in the arts, particular with the Greenwood Community Theater, and we feel she would be an asset to the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee, and she is here and she's willing to serve.
Why don't you read her bio, just so we can brag on her a little bit?
Okay. Lisa Smith is a native of Greenwood, South Carolina. A graduate of Greenwood High School and the University of Georgia with a bachelor's in fine arts and drama theater and a master's in secondary English education. She is a retired teacher of 33 years, having taught at the high school, middle school, and elementary school levels. Lisa is active in the choir and children's programs at Main Street United Methodist Church, the Greenwood Community Theater, and various community organizations. Married to Jeff Smith, she has, they have, two children, Granger and Mary Lyle, as well as two precious grandchildren, Campbell and Finley.
Thank you.
I have a future in reading bio.
And Ms. Smith, you, you are willing to, to serve in, in this capacity?
I am.
All right, great. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Smith, or?
Thank you for being willing to serve.
Welcome aboard.
Well, we, we welcome you aboard. I know you'll do a great job at some. I know you'll do a, a great job, but, um, we appreciate the help. Thank you. All right. Do we have a, uh, do we have a motion?
Motion to consider the, to appoint, to the appointment of Lisa Smith to the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee.
We have a motion by Ms. Hutto, second by Mr. Miller. Any further discussion regarding Ms. Smith's appointment? All in favor of, of appointment of Lisa Smith to the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee?
Aye.
That motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. Now it's official, we can officially welcome you now. Thank you.
And you don't have to stay if you don't want to.
Very good.
Ah, no.
Oh, I did see that.
Thank you for coming.
Congrats. Tell Jeff, congrats.
Under new business, item number two is to consider ordinance number twenty-one dash zero two-two, authorizing the city manager to negotiate a purchase contract conveying approximately point two-two acres of city-owned property located on Gray Street. Uh, this is first reading, and I'm going to let Ryan cover this item.
Sure. So some of you may recall, back in twenty nineteen, we were approached by the owner of seven oh six Green Street. Uh, that property's outlined there in white. Um, we found out that the adjacent property there in red was actually owned by the city. Um, we acquired it in nineteen seventy-nine. I believe it was, uh, August of twenty nineteen when we brought this forward to council, and you set a minimum, um, bid amount at a thousand dollars. Afterwards, we, we posted the, uh, RFB for, to receive sealed bids on that property. We didn't actually receive any bids, unfortunately. Um, so nothing ever happened with the property. We've recently been reapproached by that property owner. Um, and I asked why we didn't receive any bids originally, said just didn't have the money at the time, it's fine. So we reposted the RFB, we did receive a sealed bid, there was only one bid that we received that was a thousand dollars. Um, so what this would do, I, he's actually been maintaining the property as well, he just wants a better, bigger piece of land for his kids to play on. He's going to continue maintaining it, obviously, and probably going to fence it in. Um, so at this point, we're just asking for, uh, your authorization to proceed with the purchase contract for that property.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Hutto, second by Mr. Bass. Any further discussion regarding ordinance number twenty-one dash zero two-two? How, how, how big is this?
Point two-six acres. Point two-six, there's a typo in the.
Oh, I see.
This is real close to, uh, the city shop.
Yes, right.
The backside of the city shop.
Yeah.
All right. All in favor of ordinance number twenty-one dash zero two-two?
Aye.
That motion carries by a vote of seven to zero.
Under new business, item number three is to consider ordinance number twenty-one dash zero two-three, annexing and rezoning one parcel of land approximately fifteen point six oh one acres located at nineteen twenty-seven Calhoun Avenue owned by RTB Capital LLC. Um, I would ask Draper and/or Phil to come up and kind of cover this. I know we covered a little bit in executive session. This is the property that is adjacent to nineteen twenty-five Calhoun Road, which council previously annexed and approved for a hundred and?
Twenty.
Twenty homes. He has since requested that council also allow him to annex this area in red to extend that subdivision and add an additional sixty-seven homes. That would be similar to what he's constructing on the other portion.
Right. So it'd be a total of a hundred and eighty-seven if the rezoning was approved. It's the same, same zoning request, the lower portion, when it came before you in May, was you voted to rezone it to R seven. He's asking for the same zoning. Um, it's all intended to be one subdivision, Johns Creek subdivision. Um, the den, the density in the R seven zone is seven units per acre. This, if complete, even at a hundred and eighty-seven units, would still be only three point five-five units per acre, so it's well below the density allowed by that zone. Um, just as a note, planning commission did recommend that this be rezoned to NPR. Staff's kind of the opinion that doesn't really make sense. You'd have one section subdivision that could just proceed and another that would have to go through the NPR process like we just went through with Seven Oaks. So it would probably be the simplest and wisest decision if you decided to approve this request to rezonate to R seven.
What is, what is staff's, uh, thoughts on that?
We would recommend approval to R seven.
Yeah, there's R, R seven already.
That's correct, as of last, last month.
Thank you. Any other questions for Draper? Thank you. Appreciate it.
I would just like to note that this is a combined ordinance, so your, one ordinance will annex and, and assign zoning to the property. In second, in second reading, we'll have your public hearing.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve, um, ordinance, I'll have to look at the number.
Twenty-one dash zero two-three.
Twenty-one dash zero two-three to annex and rezone to R seven into the city ordinance.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Hutto, second by Mr. Miller. Any further discussion regarding ordinance number twenty-one dash zero two-three?
This being Ward five?
I believe it is in Ward five yesterday.
Yeah.
A lot of new roads to walk.
Yeah. All right. All in favor of ordinance number twenty-one dash zero two-three?
Aye.
That motion carries by a vote of seven to zero.
Um, at this time, we would ask city council to consider executive session for two items, one being the discussion of negotiations incident to proposed contractual arrangements with Greenwood County, and item number two will be discussion regarding the development of security personnel or devices. Uh, we did not anticipate any action from executive session.
All right.
Uh, motion to enter executive session with no action afterwards.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Miller, second by Ms. Hutto. Any further discussion regarding the motion to go into executive session? All in favor of going into executive session?
Aye.
Motion carries by a vote of seven to zero.
It's up here, June twenty-first is the last today. Uh, this Saturday is the Ward Two litter pickup, and it starts at nine o'clock. Everybody can meet at Triangle Hardware there on Kate Way. We look forward to that.
Tara may do a video, if you've got time this week, to do a social media video with her. I can get her.
When is she in Ward three?
July?
Next, next month? Yes, ma'am.
My body will be in shape by then.
Well, we're praying for it.
Uh, Ms. Hutto said that they're having a reception at the Art Center on the twenty-fifth, which is Friday at?
Five to seven.
Five to seven for their new bloom exhibit. The Art Center's probably been the first time they've had one in a long time.
Since February of twenty twenty.
Since February of twenty twenty. Um, July fifth is city offices are closed. I wanted to remind you all that we do not have a work session on July twelfth, and we appreciate you all greatly for that, greatly for that. Thank you. Uh, July eighth through the tenth is the barbecue festival. Um, July nineteenth, the county made us aware of a ribbon cutting for the new public transit, ten o'clock at the courthouse. And then July twenty-second through the twenty-fourth is the MASC annual meeting. Who's going to that? Okay. All right. So that's twenty-second through the twenty-fourth. Looks like a pretty good agenda.
I didn't see you. Ronnie, you?
All right. So I, that's all I have.
No, because that's when the schools? On Wednesday, the twenty-third, this, this Wednesday, from one to three, we're doing another food distribution at the YMCA. There'll be fourteen hundred family food, uh, farmer family boxes. I'm telling you, if you notice somebody, it's, there's midline, and we, we understand it, but, um, the boxes go very quickly. They start giving it out early. It'll be advertised at one o'clock. I would strongly suggest people, they typically start giving them out about forty-five minutes before the post of time. It'll, it'll be a lot, um, a lot of folks that are, that are down there.
Do you need a box here, bro?
If possible. But there, but there's, there's, they're fifty-pound boxes with produce and an assortment of meat, uh, of frozen meat that can be, that can be given out, and?
Same ones that Bishop upgraded, same, same type of thing?
This is, uh, yes.
But another product?
This is, this is farmers to families, USDA program, but this is going to be the last one for our community because the federal government stopped these. And so this second harvest is trying to fit these in, so we're doing one in Greenwood, we're doing one in Abbeville.
So, so get there Wednesday around noon, maybe?
Yeah.
Where is it?
So the YMCA.
All right. Who wants to adjourn?
Oh, yeah. Motion to adjourn. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Miller, second by Ms. Bartlow, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Motion.